Okay, let's try to get started if we can. It's right up, straight up and down five o'clock. And we want to give everybody plenty of time and not rush. And, you know, we could call this the Karen Scott Hour, probably more so than anything else. You know, I think what I want to do, this was pretty successful last year. We really ran at it very informally. And, you know, Karen's got this so organized, it's really easy to flip from one session or one department or another and back and forth. And so, I felt very comfortable with our success in last year's budget hearing, and I think that we'll head in that same direction. You know, Karen did her executive summary on the front page of your booklet. And it kind of, you know, puts it in a nutshell. I mean, basically, you know, where are we spending it? And how much we're gonna have income and how much we're spending? And so, I think there's a really good, some really good numbers in there, which also includes our 2.2 percent raises. So, Karen, have you got anything you want to add to my short comments?
Mayor, council members, I would just say that, of course, something that's very new for 2019 is the IT fund budget. If you all remember last year, you all approved the Chief Information Technology Officer position with the, our goal and desire to form an IT budget that's a department that's standalone. We have worked, John Barber has worked tirelessly with the department heads to identify those expenses that were in their budgets for things like software and hardware maintenance and purchases. Also, of course, all of the employees that were formerly budgeted in four different budgets now reside in the IT fund budget. Their salaries and expenditures. And there is one new position in there, an administrative position for John. We believe and have already realized some savings from efficiencies and economies of scale by one department being in charge of those types of purchases for the city. So, that is, I would say, the most significant change in the budget next year, but it's not necessarily new money, it's just moved around.
Okay, and it was, it's fairly obvious that, you know, with the other part of the FY18 and FY19, and personal services are actually down this year, but we're pulling that money out of departments and put it into IT.
Correct.
So, that's what that difference in that number is. So, I've made myself some notes. Of course, I've had the luxury of asking all my questions earlier than tonight. So, I see Jane Ginn in the audience. Jane, congratulations on your victory, and also Linda Robinson, our sitting council member. Jane, I'm very comfortable with you asking questions tonight if you would like to. So, does anybody have a problem with that? If you wanted to, Jane, you could come up here and sit where city clerks? You're okay? Okay. And after this is over, if you want to ask Karen any questions, or Chief Bradley, or me? Perfect. So, anyway, we're glad to have you on our new team. Okay, let's just open it up. Who wants to take first stab? Ms. Ross?
I was gonna let somebody else go first. And actually, this, like I told Ms. Scott today, this is a pretty boring budget. It's pretty much, you know, there's really no new meat in it or anything other than the IT department, which is, you know, it's pretty exciting to see any duplications being removed or whatever. So, first thing, last year, we put $30,000 in the budget for the Old Mill for the water feature. That money was never used. And then, I know that this year also, in Parks and Rec, we have $45,000 for the Old Mill. That $30,000, we need to encumber that amount. The $45,000 is to get the water to the top of the hill, but then, there's also the rock wall, there's several other things at the $30,000. So, I just want to make sure that we encumber that $30,000.
Yeah, we've talked about that, and Karen knows what she's doing and how she's gonna do.
So, just want to make sure that we have the $75,000 for next year.
So, we're gonna have, we're gonna have $35,000 from 2018, or $30,000 from 2018. $45 in 2019, and then, Ward money's gonna make up the difference.
Will help.
And from what Terry tells me is that he's trying to get more of a confirmed bid, because they're trying to say if they run into rock, then they don't know what the price is gonna be.
Right, and I talked to the engineers today, too, and they're pretty comfortable with the $45 to get it to the top of the hill, with the help.
Absolutely. Come to Mike, please.
What we discussed last year is that we were gonna take a, and actually bore through the ground from, to get from the pump to the water features. With that, I did not get a good price, as I've told most of you that I didn't. If they hit rock, what were we gonna do? The price was not stopped. This is how we've changed it, though. We're gonna drain the pond, we're gonna run some of the features across the rock wall. We're gonna actually do the work from the east side of the project up to the north side where it will, and then, that's about the $45 we're talking about, is another $24 to make the waterfall work. So, we're actually gonna do a lot of the work ourselves, starting pretty close and should be finished hopefully with about late April, early May. But that has changed. What I said before is, I did not get a price that if we hit rock from the other individuals, that it could not go up. And that's why I more or less said, no, I'm not gonna have an opening contract like that. So, just kind of letting, you know, we've kind of found a way now to make it all happen and on schedule, but I do need that little extra money.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Ms. Robinson?
My only que, my question before we get started, is the budget, is this information online where the public can go and review it?
It was put on the website last week.
Last week it is on the website?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you all.
More questions? Ms. Ross?
I was just gonna say, too, if you go to the city's website and you click on Government, there's a, it says Budget on there. There's a link to the budget on there. There was, I really don't, Karen, I talked to quite a bit today.
Not a question, but I will make a comment that I met with Karen. And when I went into it, I said, this is probably the first time I've sat down with a budget and had such a few amount of questions than I normally do. And it was just really well done. I thank you. And again, the questions I had, she answered, and very pleased. Thank you.
Let me, while, Ms. Ross, while you're looking, some notes that I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of, that this budget, even as tight as it is, we've included a $1.3 million ladder truck, or Ariel, which will be new. And our ladder truck that we have now, it's stationed up in McCain, is 15 years old. So, we got our money's worth, the fire department took care of it as long as they could, and so, we were glad to be able to afford to buy a new truck. Police Department, we spent over a million dollars on new vehicles. One of them was a more expensive vehicle, but Chief Davis and his staff felt like we really needed it. And I usually don't second guess Mike very often. He doesn't ask for anything unless he has to have it.
Will we sell the old truck?
Well, usually, we keep it in reserve. Chief Tucker, are we gonna keep the ladder truck in reserve?
Yes, sir.
Good. It's in decent enough shape that it'll be our go-to truck if one of these others break down. But we do sell some, we have given a few away.
Yeah, I remember the tank or something.
Okay. Sanitation, we're buying two new garbage trucks. We bought two this year, we're buying two next year. And also, we're making that last $269,000 payment on that five-year lease that we had. So, this is a good year for sanitation. Those two garbage trucks are $340,000. So, I want everybody to be aware that we do have some big-ticket items, but we're still able to stay within a reasonable budget. Okay, other questions? Ms. Ross?
One thing I just, I wanted to point out, for Ozark Mission project, we've got Liza Godwin and Bailey Faulkner here. You know, we have an increase in there. They've done so much for North Rock throughout the year, so very happy to see that increase for Ozark Mission. If anybody had questions, they're here.
If Liza is involved in it, then we want it to happen.
We know it will happen. Chief Davis, if he could come explain about the new vehicle with the large price tag? I know I've had quite a few questions on that, and he knew he was gonna be asked, probably.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, it's called a Bearcat. It's a ballistic engineered armor response vehicle is what that stands for. Basically, it's for crisis negotiations, tactical medics, and anyone else that needs it, in case we have to rescue somebody that's down and we can't get to them, you can do it safely. The equipment that we've had before is military surplus, and it looks military, very military. This does not. And so, we will be getting rid of that costly equipment. And so, this is brand-new. If it's okay, then we order it tonight, even though we don't have to pay for it right now, but it takes about six months for it to be built.
And this, can't we use this for like evacuation if there was an active shooter?
Yes.
And we had six children, we could go in there and get them and pull them out of there with this vehicle?
Yes, it's, it's an amazing vehicle, and actually, in looking at case studies around the country, a lot of incidents have just not happened, just stopped because of that particular vehicle. And somebody sees it, and they know that there's no overcoming it.
Another question?
Do other cities our size have this?
I'm sorry, what?
Do other cities our size have some?
It's becoming more and more, Little Rock's got one, the county has locally, state police has two, Benton has one, as a matter of fact, I think. So, it's becoming more common. And, you know, it'd be nice to be able to borrow some of those sometimes, but the problem turns into training and then us using it and setting it up for ourselves, they don't really care to do that.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, Mr. Baxter?
Mayor, I'd just like to comment that there is one additional thing in the special appropriations that is for our new, I don't know if we could say city-owned cemetery, well, city-owned cemetery, but not North Little Rock Cemetery.
Follow that.
It's nice to see that, that's, there's a lot of our history with folks that are buried there, so I'm glad to see that. We just recently created a common cemetery commission, so that three times goes past.
Right.
But it's good to see that, it's important.
Yeah, we're gonna do some nice things out there. And the committee that we appointed is already working and looking at opportunities for grants. And so, I'm gonna hope that maybe by this time next year, we'll have that thing fenced and a little bit more organized. So, everything's going in that direction there. Yes, ma'am.
And Mayor, you know, I see that there has been an increase for PAL, Police Athletic League, and I'm real happy about that. It's much needed.
We, we can't throw enough money at that one, to be honest with you.
I agree.
The program gets bigger and better, and we've got a great director over there. And so, every little bit helps. I don't know how many we served this past year. Mike, 600?
Yeah.
Ken, 500, 600 kids?
Yes.
Yep. So, that's well worth our money, no doubt. Mayor? Yep.
I see we're, we still have, or we have a $25,000 appropriation to Verizon Arena for a new scoreboard or for, with their, with the naming rights and everything, the change recently at Verizon and their financial situation changing, do we still have a need to supplement that?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's a, that's a five-year contract, if my memory serves me. Four-year, four-year contract, $25,000 a year, that's $100,000, $125,000.
Is that that new scoreboard that we got from somebody?
Yeah, it came from Atlanta Hawks, I believe. And, but remember that $10 million is coming from Simmons Bank for naming rights, comes over a period of, I think, 20 years.
Yeah.
So, it's not like they're writing a $10 million check tomorrow.
Well, the article in the paper that they said they were gonna use it, their annual contribution from Simmons to refurb Verizon.
Well, just normal maintenance, for sure. Yeah. So, I mean, we split that with the county and the city of Little Rock, and so, that was a very fair price, and we got a really, we got a scoreboard now that we can apply for NCAA basketball tournaments and things like that where we couldn't before. Thank you. Questions? Ms. Ross?
This is on the recycle fee that, under sanitation, and I talked to Ms. Scott about this, too, is that we pay waste management on what we bill, on the electric bills, you know, what's billed, and not everybody pays their electric bill. We have some that go unpaid, we know how many, much we write off every year. I just want to make sure that we somehow figure out how to make sure that we're not paying for people that we are not collecting on. That's one of the things that I've asked her to look into. I know it's, it may not be an easy thing, it's not a huge amount, but that's still something, every little bit helps. So, I want to make sure, 'cause I know...
We're probably, even though they didn't pay their electric bill, doesn't mean that we didn't pick up the recycle.
Well...
But, it goes into the collectible of their electric bill. So, if we get it back in, you know, by, you know, a later date or 90 days later, then it comes back, so...
I just know that when we have houses that go into foreclosure and people walk off and leave their property, which we have quite a few of that, that those are billed, but we do not collect that.
Yep.
So, especially with the rates going up, so it's going to, you know, it'll add up. That's another thing that I really think we need to keep an eye on. I have another question. The $100,000 under the airport, under equipment, what's that for?
Remember, I started two years ago of putting some money into a savings account in anticipation that we were gonna have some sort of program out there, or project out there. So, I did 70 year before last, I did 100 last year, do 100 again this year, and so, we will end up, we'll have $270,000 in that savings account. It's kind of like, you know that account we set up for the beautification of I-30?
In East McCain.
Exactly the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
I anticipate, before the end of the year, bringing in the entire proposal for the airport, for a special project at Parks, and for what we're anticipating the overruns on police department costs to be, so that we'll know what direction you guys want to go, because we're gonna have to either fund part of it out of our general fund, and then, we'll probably have to get a bond for the difference in the police department.
Okay, so, it's, equipment's just misleading, I guess?
Yeah.
That's what it is? It should be renamed, I guess, then?
Yeah.
Rather than equipment. There's another one, too, on the parking revenue for parks, there's zero. Has there been changed or something, or?
Oh, Terry, you got a good answer for that, or Karen?
Last year, we put in approximately $20,000. We thought we'd get some money that for people who'd park in there, Stan was gonna run it for us and actually park people. Every time we had an event that we thought we'd have parking there, he didn't do it. So, I took it from the 20 to zero, 'cause we got nothing out of it. We just had plans for him to park more people around AIM and for the Fourth of July celebration, Veterans Day, and things like that, and it never materialized. So, when it did materialize, I just took it down to zero.
So, so, this is not necessarily parking at Burns Park?
No, 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 no. This was at, this was hoping that we would get enough parking revenue down on the riverfront there, is where it was supposed to come from. So, when working through Stan, every time we had a chance to get parking, he had no one to work it. So, our $20,000 that thought we were gonna get, ended up getting nothing.
Did you say Stan or Stand? Who, who are you? I don't know.
Stan, the guy that does all of our events planning.
Okay, all right, so we, so we haven't received, so we, we're not receiving anything? So, he's no longer doing that, you know?
He didn't do any of it, so I just took it. If we get anything this year, which I'm hoping to, it'll be just a bonus.
Okay, all right.
We still get money off of those parking lots, it just comes through the street side.
Okay. And one more here, while you're here. Under soccer concession, 2019?
Right.
It's also zero?
I took it out. We're not gonna sell concessions at soccer anymore. And the reason why, what we're selling there is hot dogs, hamburgers, and the most of soccer moms do not, they bring their own. So, I was sitting there having two to three people run a concession stand for those events. Meanwhile, we're not making anything. So, the cost of doing business and the cost of just the goods we buy was going down. So, we're, we're gonna have concessions, but not for soccer anymore. We're just not doing any business.
So, would that be something if some local organization?
They wanted to come at us, yes, sir.
Wanted to take over and...
And we went out and kind of wanted to get vending trucks, maybe do that, and come in and plant. So, we're looking at that, but just to have an open concession that we were doing no business, that didn't make sense.
Because I'm looking at Liza Godwin in the back, and I know we worked several of those soccer concession stands to earn money for uniforms years and years ago, so...
Yeah, it's, it's, again, and Liza, I tell you, most of the parents there bring their own oranges and grapefruit, and they don't eat the hot dogs and hamburgers that we serve there at the concessions at the soccer tournament. So, when I sit there and see what we pay for goods, and when I sit there and looked at what we're actually having to put two to three people in those concession stands, and we're not making anything, it just made sense to do away with concessions there. So, it actually saves us money, quite a bit of money, as you saw.
But that would be something for some local, because I know that you do buy a lot of hot chocolate and coffee and ring pops and candy and stuff at those places.
We're still gonna, we're still gonna have water and drink like that, but as far as selling the hot dogs, hamburgers, Fritos, no.
So, if some organization wanted to use the facilities to raise funds, then they would contact you?
Just contact us, like they do. If they don't even put their trucks out there, we still charge, what, $200 or 10% or however they want to pay it, but that's, that's available.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Ms. Ross?
I know every year with the hub, I always say, what are we doing with that $85,000 originally that was for the youth? And I have to say that this year, under their new director, Chris Jones, that I have seen things that they've done. They've, they've given scholarships to the middle school, so, you know, I'm much more comfortable this year with that funds for the youth. And I hope they continue to do that and give more scholarships and do more things for the youth.
And we've got three or four line items that are lined up just for, just for youth, so I'm really proud. I mean, we probably, I bet we're doing twice as much?
Absolutely.
For youth programs right now than we were six years ago.
Okay, and then, this is off to animal control. No, I'm jumping all around and everything. We've got $10,000 in there for spay and neuter. Is that enough? I mean, to me, the more we put into spay and neuter, the less animals that we have in the city. So, I didn't know if David Miles could address that, or...
Come on up, David, and give us your opinion on that.
Because I'd much rather put it in on the front end and then...
Mayor, Council, the $10,000 for the spay and neuter clinic, that is, we have vets that come in and sterilize our adoptive animals. We also pre-sterilize our animals. That money is paid through professional services. That $10,000 is for the upkeep of the spay and neuter clinic for sutures, for any equipment that vets may need to perform sterilizations in-house.
Okay, so that's basically supplies, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Is what that is for that spay and neuter?
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay.
Yep. This year, we put roughly $10,000 in a new surgical table, new lights, new scales. It's been quite some time since that, since our spay and neuter clinic's been updated.
Okay, so, does animal control, are you comfortable with the amount of money that you have to do the spay and neuter?
Yes, ma'am.
You are?
Yes, ma'am. In the near future, I'll, next year, I am considering going up. We have not had an increase that we pay the local veterinarians per sterilization in 16, 17 years, so it's about time they get a little bit more money, just not this year.
Okay, all right, thanks.
We have reached an agreement, you know, we were spending, and we were receiving money from the county to handle county animals in effective January?
Yes, sir.
We will no longer be taking county animals. They're gonna be working and taking care of their own. So, that's gonna cut some of our overhead down, it'll cut down some of our revenue, too, but we were just getting at the point that taking those additional animals, we're filling up our cages way too quickly, and we didn't have room to keep the adoptable animals. So, we spent some, spent six months with Judge Hyde, and he understands our issues. He's agreed to start his own program at the county, and so, we'll be out of the, we won't be taking county animals anymore.
What percentage, what percentage of your work was coming from the county?
Upper 30%. Upper 30s.
Okay.
And it would go on a month-by-month basis, it could change, but not that many adoptable animals come from county.
Right. Like the hogs and different things, and pigs and everything else that came from the county?
Yes, ma'am.
Or abandoned animals that have a mange and things like that, that we have to put down. That's expensive, and plus, it's tough. It just doubles the number of animals we have to put down at a year's time. So, anyway, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a typo, not that anybody would commit a typo, on Administrator of Justice of State? In 2018?
Give me the line number.
Line item is 55976.
What page?
2018, the budget was 800,000. But on both, pardon me? Page on the bottom corner?
What page? What page?
Page nine. It's page nine. I reduced that, it's, that is a pass-through amount, so there's monies collected at the court, they turn them over, then we just turn them over to either the state or the county, and those funds continue to go down. So, if they go back up, we'll have the offsetting revenue, but I also reduce the revenue.
Yeah, we, I, I don't get involved too deeply in the expenses of the court as long as they break even. And, you know, the state, state takes the biggest chunk of any speeding tickets and fines and things like that. So, as long as we, that court line items break even, don't you think we break about even?
Yep.
So, anybody that thinks that we're using it as a moneymaker, it's not. Maybe for the state, but not for us. Yes, ma'am?
Under the economic development, in the $75,000 increase this year, are we supposed to be receiving quarterly reports on that? Wasn't that part of the development agreement?
Tell me about it in the electric department budget?
Uh-huh.
The 275?
Right.
When's, is that right, Todd?
Same.
Everything's the same as it always was.
Well, it says 2018, 200,000, and 200, 2019, 275,000.
Yeah, I think that was a typo.
We need to check that, then.
Because we've been putting 275 in there for the last four, five years. Scott?
Over.
Yeah, Dana, isn't that right? Yeah?
Okay, we need to, but are we supposed to be getting quarterly reports? When do we start getting those, or is that...
Yeah, Todd, second said, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
When does, when does that, I know, I was just trying to remember when we even started, when we're supposed to be getting those quarterly reports.
I don't know.
January.
January 1st will be our first report, okay.
Wait, and that, that money now, you know, you know, before, that money went to the Economic Development Commission?
Yeah.
And their board distributed it out. Now, that any, any money spent out of there have to come through the council. And if it's over $100,000, then we have to meet all sorts of regs.
Okay.
Correct? Karen?
Yeah.
The first quarter was waived because the city needed to give us a bunch of information. So, the first report should have been due June and September, and then, end of the year, or October, end of the year.
So, we're due one?
We're due several. I mean, I have them, I just haven't submitted them to the council.
Okay, we need to make sure that we get those, so that we won't be gigged on anything, not properly reporting them. Okay?
We've got two meetings this week on economic development, I think, so we'll get our arms around that. Ron?
Karen, I got two questions related to sales tax and revenue, just to educate me a little bit. Is that, is that a move in targets when you're sitting there with, you know, trying to, and first of all, how is that accomplished? And then, secondly, where are, where's the latest on internet sales? That maybe you were, where, where, do we, is there, can we have any expectation of a change in laws on internet sales? Is that still in the works, or, I don't know?
I can address that. This is all what I learned last week, that Congressman Womack was leading the charge[1709.66] This is all what I, I learned last week, that Congressman Womack was leading the charge on that in Washington, and we were having a hard time getting it out of the House. The Senate had agreed to do it, still having issues getting it out of the House. However, what they have decided that they think they want to do in Washington is flip it back to the states and say, you guys handle your own. If you want a sales tax on internet sales, do your own, and then the Amazons in the world will, will follow suit. So we've taken that information from Washington and said, well, okay. I've got five regional meetings set up in the next two weeks. I'm going to travel to Springdale, Jonesboro, Hope, Lake Village, and then we'll have one here in central Arkansas, that we are inviting all the legislators and the mayors and city council members from those regions in for a couple-hour meeting to show them what our agenda's going to be in this upcoming legislation. And the one item that I'm going to, of course, get, really get on my soapbox is making that state law so that we could get internet sales tax collected. Last year, not last year, year before last, we were six votes short of getting it to where we wanted it to be. We feel real comfortable now that the Supreme Court's ruled that it's okay. That was what a lot of the legislators were saying, well, there's no reason for us to act on it until the Supreme Court rules on it. Supreme Court did rule on it. It is legal for us to do that. So in these five meetings in the next two weeks, I'm going to be explaining to the, to the state legislators that we're, we're going to be coming to you come January, and we appreciate your support. So I've, I've, I've got very high hopes that we're going to be able to approve that.
Slow process, but it's moving.
Yeah, it's only been going on ten years. Yeah. You got another answer, too?
Well, to answer your question about, I, I think what you were asking is projecting future sales tax collections. You know, our sales tax has been pretty stable the last three years. In fact, I would call it flat. So the revenue projections for sales tax in two thousand and nineteen, with the exception of the additional two months of the new local tax, is exactly the same as it was in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen.
And that's not really a good thing?
No.
We'd like for it to go up three or four percent every year, but it hasn't. Other questions?
I know that we, our Comcast franchise is coming up. You know, we've already received a payment annually under the old contract, but under the contract that we have proposed tonight, it's quarterly, so we'll have that money coming in faster, too. So that's a good thing.
Yeah. I, I met with one of their vice presidents two weeks ago in Dallas, and then we met again in Los Angeles last week, and I could not get them to come up any more money on their franchise fees. And, you know, back twenty-five years ago, it was a practice of these utilities to come in and give you a little bonus. You know, our original TV equipment in this council chambers was, was paid for by Comcast, you know, twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago. They don't do that practice anymore, nor does AT&amp;T or any of the others. So they were very professional in, in our negotiations on our contracts. We took it as far as we could possibly take it, and we understand that, you know, what they're going to do is what's normal and what's fair. So I'm completely okay with the, with the contract we've got.
Okay. One more thing, while you're talking about this, this was something I had on my list, too, is are there any funds in the budget? Did I overlook them for upgrading the equipment in here for the sound?
Yes. Hundred and fifty?
What is that? What was that under?
It's in special appropriations.
Can, Nathan, do you know enough about it to explain what we're getting for that hundred and fifty?
I do, sir. Basically, the technology that we have now, most of it, or part of it, is not working. It's just outlived its fourteen-year shelf life, to say the least. We have five cameras that we like to switch from, and that switcher is broken. And so right now, we broadcast with one single camera pointed on y'all, and we can't do anything else because the switcher, if we bought a new one, it doesn't interact with any of our other old equipment that is working. So we're going to be putting new screens up on the wall. We've got new projectors because these have, are not bright enough anymore. We're going to have new cameras. We're going to start broadcasting in HD. We're going to have a new graphics generator, so we'll be able to put your name under you like, you know, you see on news channels and stuff when you're speaking. We're going to have new monitors out here for the public to be able to see better what's being presented, and new microphone, a new sound system for you as well, in addition to all the technology that goes in back there to make all of that work.
It's on page ten.
Yeah, it is under renovations. I didn't know exactly what you were talking about when you said renovations. So are you comfortable, a hundred and fifty thousand will do that?
Yes. The, the people that we have discussed this with, who know more about it than we do, came in between about one-thirty-five to one-forty-five, so I put about a little bit of contingency in there.
Okay.
So I am comfortable with the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar mark.
We've been struggling. I've been trying to put it off, but we just, we can't put it off any longer. Other thoughts, questions, comments? Ms. White?
Just one more thing. The, I was pleased to see the Emergence Association amount increased because I know what those associations do and how they give to the community, and that's good.
Yeah, I would like to expand that. The last two we tried to expand, we kind of fell flat on, so I don't know. We might turn around here and try to rejuvenate some of that lost interest. So we haven't forgot those people. They just can't seem to get everything and everybody working in the same direction. And I understand it. When you don't have retail, retailers tend to want to really work together, and some of these new locations that we're looking at are a lot of wholesale. And so their, their desire to advertise and to joint projects isn't as great as retail. But we need to look at other things that we can do for them, for them to, to join together. We all, we all know that, you know, the more people we got involved in, in upgrading a neighborhood, or a retail street, or a commercial street, the more you got doing it, the better it's going to be. Ms. Ross?
Just wanted to point out that, you know, a lot of times we hear, you, the city doesn't do things in different areas, that a lot of it's concentrated in one area, not necessarily throughout the city. You know, last year, we fully funded the match for the Jump Start Project in Levy. And this year, this fully funds the Jump Start City Match for Park Hill. And in this year's budget for Park Hill loan, it's five-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, five-hundred dollars that's going towards the, the Park Hill Jump Start match. So I just wanted to make sure that people know that we're not just concentrating on one part of the city.
Yeah. Still, you know, we just need to remind everybody to have a little bit of patience, because just because we get a plan doesn't mean that highway department's for it.
Exactly.
That's correct.
We got to make a lot of people happy. All right. I think I'm going to open it up to the public if, if you guys are finished, and we've got about twenty minutes to answer any questions or thoughts from anybody in the audience, if there's any. The microphone is yours. You didn't have to sign up. If you want to come up and speak, you're welcome. And if you don't, you coming up, Jimmy? Come on.
Big attaboy award for Debbie asking all the questions. I think it sounds like a good budget, and I hope we can accomplish everything that y'all intend to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Do the department heads ever want to come up and add anything?
No.
Or they feel...
If you got something to say, come whisper in my ear first.
Mayor, if I might, after this budget was released, we got our notification from the Workers' Compensation Trust, and we are going to have a slight increase next year, so that'll be in the budget that comes to the council for formal adoption. And we're looking for that at the December ninth meeting.
But while we're, while we're doing the hotspots here, the, if some of you noticed in, in the budget that we prepared on here, that our contract on the county jail expires at the end of two thousand and nineteen. That eight-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, or whatever, nine-hundred thousand dollars that we've been paying is, if, if the judge gets what he wants, that, that number is going to double. And the judge knows that we're not happy about that, and he's also looking for alternatives from us on how we think it should be done and how it would be fair. As y'all all know, it's, it's a matrix that is, you can't hardly solve. And the county's involved, the state's involved, and when, if we take a prisoner over there, you know, how long do we have to pay before he becomes a county prisoner? How long do they have to pay before he becomes a state prisoner? So one thing that we're looking at right now, and I'm looking for Chief Davis to nod his head, but some of our, our people that we take over there, maybe we can avoid and take them. We're looking at doing some equipment that we actually fingerprint in the vehicles. So if we were arresting somebody for a misdemeanor, we might be able to fingerprint them in the car, give them a ticket, basically, to show up in court, and not take them and book them in. Right now, under the, what the judge is proposing is that if we take a prisoner over there and book him, I mean, if he's there for ten minutes, it's a hundred and seventy-six dollars. And then we pay for the next two or three days until he gets arraigned or whatever else. So if we can divert, you know, a thousand misdemeanor criminals, if you will, it's a hundred and seventy-six dollars a head that we can save, and they'll still be adjudicated through the ticket system, through the court system. Am I right in saying that, Chief?
Yes, sir.
So we're working on that, and hopefully by the end of next year, when, when the rates go up at the county jail, we will have that already in process. That, that, equipment's not expensive. You remember what it was, Mike?
You're right. It's not that expensive. Probably we will keep it at headquarters because we think it's important, maybe, to take the person away from the area that they're involved in, take them to headquarters, and let them be on their own after that. Shoplifting's a big one. You're looking at probably seven hundred shoplifters. So that's, so that we currently have to take the county jail, fingerprint them, and so that, that could avoid that, which would be great. Yes.
So you have, what, you'll have one person per shift that, that's their specialty?
No. The way the system is now, AFIS system, automatic system, I mean, you just come in, and even me, after thirty-three years, I can fingerprint somebody and, and it will be perfect.
But we have parameters as to what the mist, you know, the...
Yes, yes, we do.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Ms. White?
When this happens, are these people going to still feel like they did something really wrong? I mean, is this going to change the magnitude of that, or...
No. Right now, when they get to the county jail, somebody for shoplifting, you're sotting them out, they never go back in the back anyway to speak of. So it's more about a little bit of inconvenience, and also to make the merchant or whoever it may be involved in this feel better that they're off their property, they're not anywhere around there. In the neighborhood, let's say you arrest somebody for disloyal or something like that, you want that problem gone, and that will solve that problem.
And we'll be able to track.
Yes. All that will be the exact same. It goes through the system. The courts will have all that information immediately, and so, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Okay. I'm waiting for anybody else. Liza, Ms. Godwin?
I'm Liza Godwin with Ozart Mission Project. Bailey Faulkner is our executive director. She's right here as well. I just want to thank you on behalf of Ozart Mission Project for the generous grant for the, for their project, for our mission project, and it's much appreciated. We are very proud of the fact that we have helped so many people in North Little Rock, and we want to set your example as a city council to our other cities around the state. I'm going to try to work with them so that they can get the same processes in place that, that you all do when you help us identify our neighbors, and so we can go work, work on their homes. So just once again, I just want to thank you for, for the grant, and we will do our best to honor it.
You bet.[1774.16]